All right, I think we've solved our technical difficulties. So I apologize for being late, but I will call this Committee of the Whole for Monday, July 18 to order. First item of business is adoption of the Committee of the Whole minutes from June 2022. Adoption's moved by Councilor Shawall, seconded by Councilor Sedu. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion carries and that takes us to our one and only report, Marshall Road Corridor Study. Over to you, Mr. Botha. Should I maybe ask, can everybody hear us? It's online?
I can hear.
Oh, good, okay, just testing.
Thank you.
So the agenda will follow. The purpose of this presentation to council today is to present initial results from public engagement, concept design for the Marshall Road corridor study. Request input from council to the concept design prior to undertaking the final phase of public engagement. Council approved an SIO for $220,000 for corridor review purposes in 2020. The study is from Sumas Way to Timberland Drive in the east, as indicated by the blue on the map. And the objective of the study was to determine a concept design for the corridor based on future needs and develop a timeline for the improvements. So Marshall Road is an important east-west corridor with connections to Sumas Way, Old Yale Road, and Wadcombe Road. The study looked at reviewing the road capacity, the function and classification, and looked at the upcoming changes in the road network and the land use on Eleanor Avenue and East Parkland Drive with respect to the future development potential of those particular few areas, as outlined on the slide right inside. So the studyology looked at future traffic projections, the land use assessment, best analysis of the corridor, traffic safety assessment of the corridor, and multimodal share being in this particular order, pedestrians, cyclists, transit, and vehicles. So it included a 2021 assessment of the traffic, which included the traffic's recent traffic signal improvements at McMillan Road and Old Yale Road intersections. A 2030 assessment that looked at the full development build-out that includes the constructed Eleanor Avenue extension to South Fraser Way and the Marshall Road extension from Timberland to Mountain Drive. And 2040 assessment was consistent with current outcomes of the transportation and transit master plan and plan. In terms of the study timelines, we had a look at the initial corridor findings and I reported to council on that last December. Then we went through a public engagement period that was on Let's Talk, which we received nearly a thousand comments on that engagement portal. And here we are today, looking at the concept design that basically resulted from listening to what the residents and the community wanted along that corridor and wished to see in the future. Phase two, year after, we'll look at public engagement, finalization line, and then later seek counsel for endorsement, final design, and then the implementation of the future. So as I mentioned, it was on Let's Talk episode or a full month earlier this year. We reached out to the public on social media and newspaper advertisements and postcards. And I mentioned we had over a thousand visits and over 100 comments from the general public on various topics. So we look, we heard that the presentation will focus around what we heard and basically how we are responding and we'll look at the four different modes of transportation that are outlined there. And I would also like to mention that Marshall Road is not a truck route. So looking at the pedestrian experience, they asked for more crosshocks between McMillan Road and Old Yale, more controlled crosshocks, and new sidewalk connections between Cork Drive and Monroe Avenue. And we looked at providing these pedestrian crossings with rectangular rapid flashing beacons at Everett and Monroe avenues and signalized pedestrian crossings in Guilford Drive and Griffiths Road and new sidewalk on the south side between Cork and Monroe Avenue. And in more detail, looking at those particular concepts, Marshall Road at Everett Road and having a protected bus stop at that location that would be controlled by pedestrians who wished to cross and pull the bus. And then on the right-hand side, at Monroe Avenue with a active rectangular flashing beacon, crosswalk as well with a pathway connection. Moving on to cycling, cyclists warranted protected facilities along the entire corridor and increased safety measures for cyclists. We looked at providing protected multi-use pathway between Sumas Way and McMillan Road as the most feasible and safest option for providing good connections to the communities along the roadway. And this would be in the form of a bi-directional bike facility between McMillan and Old Yale. Their bi-directional bike facility would be road service with some protection. So the cyclist safety measures that we looked at, we looked at conflict area pavement markings at transition areas, which is typically the green paint that you see on the roadways, flexible delineate posts for protected bi-directional facilities to emphasize the location of the bike lanes, and design integration with bus stops. So we had to look at very carefully how we integrate, or should I say, separate the bus stop facilities with the bi-directional bike lanes, and we had to mitigate parking conflict. So the multi-use pathway would be from Sumas Way to McMillan Road on the north side of Marshall, and that would extend a little further east of the McMillan intersection. We'd have a future multi-use pathway connection onto Eleanor or from Eleanor into South Fraser Way when Eleanor Avenue gets established section of South Fraser Way. And these would produce AAA facilities, basically all ages and abilities facility for both pedestrians and cyclists. And then looking on further east of McMillan Road to Old Yale Road, we would accommodate cyclists on existing pavement width. They would be protected by a buffer, which is shown there in the top right-hand corner on the photo, marked with delineated posts. And then we would also, this would be isolated from the parking conflicts that may exist. And once again, it would be a protected all ages and abilities facility. Moving on to transit, the public would like for efficient transit routes, efficient transit stops, and bus stop access seamless for pedestrian and cyclist accommodation. So in other words, residents would like cyclists to be able to take your bike to the bus stop, load your bike to the bus when using these facilities. And so we are looking at bus stop modifications and consolidation, westbound and eastbound directions, based on the ridership activity of transit design standards and bus stop integration with pedestrians and cyclists, and also to separate pedestrians from cyclists. And amenities to be provided at all transit stops with tactile warning straps and garbage bins and bus benches where possible. So the Everett Road bus stop design would be somewhat unique to what we've seen in the past. It would require that pedestrians would safely cross bike lanes into, onto a landing that would be flexible for transit users. This is typically what is the current best practice throughout the province. And then there would be integrated pedestrian crossing opportunities as well as curb bulges for traffic calming, especially on the south side of the road where the grades are steep. Moving on to vehicles, so between Marshall, sorry, on Marshall between Sumas Way and McMillan, we're looking at an additional westbound lane at Griffiths Road. We would look at, sorry, this is what we heard, difficulty turning at Eleanor Guilford Drive and Griffiths Road and improved pavement markings at McMillan Road intersection. So we would be looking at dual left turn lanes at Sumas Way and Marshall Road, dedicated left turn lanes and median at Eleanor Guilford, Griffiths, and marked eastbound left turn and westbound right turn lanes at McMillan intersection. The dedicated left turn lanes would be provided with concrete median, and this is for safety purposes. As traffic volumes increase, it would be more and more challenging to be able to undertake left turns both in and out, and therefore some restrictions to those left turns out at these two intersections on the, on the north side and Griffiths Road. So just to emphasize that this would not take place until the North Avenue continues and intersects with South Fraser Way.
Councilor Blue has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. So on this, I know we've had a lot of discussion in the past with the proximity to Sumas Way for this particular one, that you're on that hill and then you've got these two streets that are so close to each other and, and the issues that that would cause. But if I'm following what you're saying is when, when Eleanor goes through all the way, it will change the way the traffic flows because of the action back the other side. Is that correct?
Through the merit to Councilor Blue, it provides opportunities that weren't there before. So South Fraser Way with Sumas Way, the full movement intersection. And so anyone that lives on Eleanor Avenue used to use that route to enter on exit.
Carry on.
And then moving to the Sumas Way intersection with Marshall Road, slide on the left shows the dual left turn lanes on Marshall Road, whereas there's a single left turn lane today. And slide on, sorry, the photo on the right shows the dedicated left turn lane up to McMillan and a shared through and right turn lane on.
Councilor Berkman.
Just like I said, that photo, the first one, seems to get a double left-hand turn to go south, like west of Marshall. It looks like we've got a reverse funnel where we're trying to get people in the narrowest part to go on the widest, because I frequent that sometimes daily, and it seems they choke off to get into those lanes. So how's that going to be addressed?
Through the merit to Councilor Berkman. So the choke off, I understand, if I'm understanding you correctly, is that the left turn lane spills over through lane. So this option would provide additional storage to what there is currently for left turn.
The point being, they can't get to those lanes because they're farther up. I understand the loading part is there, but they can't get to them. That's happening now, so.
Through the merit to Councilor Berkman. So by providing that extra capacity, it allows some of that green time to be allocated to commuters. So we had to be finessing the, altering the traffic signal timing plan to get that job right better.
Carry on.
And so on the section from McMillan to Old Yale Road, they would like to see improved road markings, maintaining and adding more street parking. There was some concern about limited sidelines at Everett Road intersection. That's because of the steepness of Everett Road, and they would like to see a reduction in speed, i.e., in other words, some form of traffic calming. And we looked at having very clear pavement markings for bike lanes, travel lanes, and parking, and defining that better compared to what it is today. We looked at existing parking to be maintained, some additional parking to be accommodated on the south side of Marshall Road. This is east of McMillan Road. As mentioned before, we would look at section curb bulges at Everett Road or improve sidelines due to the steepness of the grade there. And slightly narrower travel lanes with clear pavement markings, curb bulges, and reducing an overall street design.
Councilor Falk has a question.
I just have a question about the parking. So there's some east of McMillan, is there any street parking on the, I guess I'm not directionally challenged between Sumas Way and McMillan?
Through the merit to Councilor Falk, no, there's no street parking on that section. Here, and, and visits. But also, maybe I'd like to add that there's very significant increase in traffic between, on that segment compared to the segments.
So is there, like, if you needed to park in that section, is there parking anywhere around there? Like, thinking of those homes, if you had guests, where would excess parking go?
Through the merit to Councilor Falk, all the parking on the residential beach or most of the residential streets, you don't. So there is, there should be adequate parking for residential.
Carry on.
And so the next steps would see public engagement facilitated by, we've had one, should I say, January 23, too, and we would have another later this month. That would probably be open for a month duration. And we would look at that, what that feedback looks like, incorporate that feedback in our design. And the recommendation is that staff proceed with the final phase of public engagement for Marshall Road Corridor Study.
Recommendations moved by Councilor Siemens, seconded by Councilor Ross. Discussion, Councilor Lowen, Berkman, and then Councilor Siemens.
Thanks for the report. redesign. I have a question back to slide on cycling, looking at it, how difficult to understand one of the statements there, how we're responding. And the response is protected bi-directional bike facility between McMillan Road and Old Yale Road.
Good question. First of all, do I understand correctly that a bike facility is reference to the route itself? When you say, use the word facility, are we talking about the bike route or pathway?
Through the merit to Councilor Lowen, yes, we're talking about the actual bike.
Okay. So then my next question is, you're talking about between McMillan Road and Old Yale Road. Those two roads are perpendicular to each other and intersect with one another. So I'm trying to understand where between one and the other might lie, like between McMillan and Old Yale. Where is the between those two roads?
Go ahead.
McMillan would be between Old Yale.
Well, they intersect with each other.
Through the merit to Councilor Lowen. So there, there's two different types of facilities. The one is between Sumas Way and just east of McMillan, which is the multi-use pathway. And then the next one is just to the east of McMillan that then changes over to a on street bi-directional protected facility.
But I understand that what you're saying, it's somewhere between McMillan Road and Old Yale Road. I'm having a hard time understanding where that might be because the two roads intersect. Am I not understanding? Is my picture confused?
Yeah. Or Marshall Road between McMillan and Old Yale. My muscle way, going all the way down to Muscleway Cemetery. Oh, it doesn't. I came to the same conclusion the first time. It's the Marshall Corridor.
Corridor between McMillan.
And Old Yale.
Oh, they're, oh, no, I understand. Between the Marshall Corridor between McMillan and Old Yale.
Right. It doesn't, I don't think it says that.
No, it doesn't.
That's, that's what we're talking about. No. Who is next? Councilor Siemens. Yes, and then Councilor Berkman, and then Councilor Ross. Yes.
So I understand this one, but between McMillan and Sumas Way, are we going to lose a sidewalk or is the sidewalk to? Just not quite sure what that's going to, how that's going to look because we're not losing any lanes between Sumas Way.
Through the merit to Councilor Siemens. So there's a slight difference here. So the Sumas Way to McMillan or just a little east of McMillan is an off-road facility that can only really be achieved once redevelopment occurs in that area because it requires more, more road dedication than what's currently there at the moment. Whereas the one on the other facility has enough road width, and so we're not actually breaking curb and gutter or making any modifications there. It's just a case of installing new infrastructure, for instance, the crosshocks and the transit stops like that located. So we would see, and I'm kind of talking ahead now, but we would see the portion east of McMillan being a phase that we could introduce way earlier than the phase that is west of McMillan, because the west of McMillan is contingent on a number of other development-related steps.
Hello?
So when we, when on the corner of Eleanor, for instance, we'll ask for that dedication when that development goes through, because I guess the majority of redevelopment of Guilford on that north side probably will happen in this foreseeable future. That's probably going to be the next expedition. That's not in the interior. So I would imagine any redevelopment on there is going to be a number of years.
Through the merit to Councilor Siemens, there is a new redevelopment area here would be the portion between Eleanor and Guilford that's currently considered for redevelopment. Acquire, there'll be some acquisitions required for the private rate to accommodate some of the properties.
Councilor Berkman.
A couple of things, and I apologize for not being on the website. Are the comments or feedback, are they on the website that we can access? Or is that, or can that be compiled to see what some of the comments were?
To Councilor Berkman, through the merit, we can certainly provide that to council, but it is not on the website.
And one other question, was another route, i.e. Della Road, looked at, if it'd be compatible, you end up with the same result as far as the two costs or user-friendly as far as the different levels up and down? Or was that not even an option?
We're not, we're discussing the Marshall Corridor, not the Old Yale.
I understand that. But we're also trying to make it user-friendly, and I was just wondering if that was even contemplated, because in my case, I'm not sure if this is the best route. And if you have. Well, I'm just, I'm just asking if that was.
Well, okay, but council may want to talk about Pirdenville, and who knows what else? This is, we should stay focused on the Marshall Corridor. But if you have questions like that of staff, feel free to talk to them. But I, I just think it's out of order to allow you to go down that road. Others can't talk about maybe Gladwood Road. I don't know. Does that make sense?
Kind of.
Kind of, okay. Carry on. Oh, sorry, we still have another speaker, Councilor Ross. Sorry.
Yeah, Councilor Lowen, I got clarification by his question, but I just want to say how much I appreciate this. And the design, I'm thrilled with that. Full disclosure, that's my neighborhood in the near Guilford area. But I mean, the reason more of us don't get out and ride our bikes for commuting is because we don't feel safe either getting out on Marshall or Old Yale. And this will make it so much safer. I guess the only thing I'm disappointed with is the timeline. Beyond our control, it's something that's dependent on redevelopment, but it's just going to take so long for people to, they don't use their bikes and feel safer.
So through the merit to Councilor Ross, I, I understand where you're coming from in that. And as I said, portion east of McMillan was something that we got very near future. There, there is, we still need the delay of a bike route, waiting federal funding for that, which we haven't received an answer. So that could possibly proceed as bike route, the same residents could be using to there. But it's a bit of a all-up kill. An electric bike now.
Yeah, what do I share? An electric bike.
All right, any, any other questions, staff?
All right. Any, any other questions, staff?
Yeah, I'll ask you more about that later, but I'm not sure how that's all.
Hey, didn't have a recommendation yet, did we?
Yeah.
You did. Sorry. My mind was somewhere else. Uh, my apologies. Uh, any further questions of the report, presentation? See, none. All those in favor, opposed if any, motion carries. That takes us to adjournment. Yes. Uh, motion to adjourn by Counselor Shawall, seconded by Counselor Falk. All those in favor. Motion carries, carried. We are adjourned and we'll reconvene here in five minutes. How's that?